Eh, ich denke, wir müssen beginnen. Wir sind 23 Minuten hinter dem Uhrzeigersinn. Aber wir hatten geplant, unsere Treffen zu starten. Und wir starten normalerweise unsere Treffen mit Gebet. Ich bin nicht sicher, ob es irgendjemand ist, der das wünscht, uns zu beten. Oh, beseitige mich jetzt, meine Seel. Komme zu, beseitige mich jetzt. Oh, beseitige mich jetzt, oh, beseitige mich jetzt. Komm zu dir. Äh, lass uns beten. Vater Heiliger, wir danken dir, liebes Gott. Dies ist der Tag, den du getan hast, und wir werden froh darüber reichensetzen. Danke, Vater Heiliger, für die Einladung von uns heute hier. Es ist durch deinen Segen und deinen Güte, dass wir hier sind. Danke, Gott, dass wir in Einheit sprechen. Mit einer Stimme verstehen wir uns. Wir danken dir für die Erstellung dieser Gelegenheit, so dass wir alle sprechen können. So dass wir alle in Kontakt mit uns miteinander sind. Wir danken dir für unsere Plenarsitzung. Wir danken dir für deine Servus, die du dieses Tage angerufen hast, um deinen Volk zu hören und auch dein Herz zu sprechen und zu antworten. Vater, wir danken dir für deine Wissens- und Verständnis. Wir danken dir, Vater Heiliger, für die Sicherheit und die Schutz dieses Tages. Und wir wollen dir Präsiös, Ehre und Glorie geben. Und wir covered dieses ganze Platz mit dem Blut von Jesus. Lass die Sprechen und die Arbeit des Blut über dieses Platz. Und lass alle sich comfortable und sicher sein, ihre Gedanken und ihre Herzen zu sprechen. In Jesus' Namen, Amen. Amen. Danke, Mama. Vielen Dank. Wir sind vorbei. Und unter uns haben wir den Redner von Tswané. Die Gemeinde, der Büro. Utata Um Tswanana. Und er ist derjenige, der uns will begrüßen. Weil dies ist sein Raum. Also werden wir dir, Redner, überlassen, um dich zu begrüßen.
Guten Morgen. Danke sehr für die Gelegenheit, mich zu begrüßen und dich alle zu begrüßen. Ich bin der Geschäftsführer des Portfolio of Basic Education, Honorar Bingu Kigaba, Mitglieder der National Assembly, Mitglieder des Stadtrat Tswané, der Mehrheitskomitee, Honorar Abgeordnete und Alten, Vertreter des Parlaments der Republik Südafrika, Offiziere und Topmanagement des Stadtrat Tswané, Mitglieder der Medien und distinguished Gäste. Ich begrüße alle, die Zeit genommen haben für ihr beschäftigtes Schedium, diesen Tag hier in der Stadt Tswané zu verbringen, um in der öffentlichen Ausschuss für die Änderung der Gesetzesordnung zu diskutieren. Ich finde es geeignet, dass diese öffentliche Teilnahmezurufe in der Stadt Tswané beginnen, weil wir die akademische Wissenschaft und Forschungshalle Südafrikas sind. Wir sind der Heimat vier Universitäten, weniger als sieben Nationalwissenschaftsgebühren. Eine estimierte 90% aller Forschung und Entwicklung in Südafrika wird in Tswané durch Institutionen wie AMSCO, das Medizinische Forschungsgesetz, das Gesetz für Wissenschaft und Industrie, und das Humanwissenschaftliche Forschungsgesetz. Aber natürlich beginnt alles mit der Grundbildung. Die Gründe, warum wir alle hier sind, die Gründe, warum wir alle heute hier sind: Die Bildung ist ein fundamentaler Fahrzeug für persönliche, nationale und globale Entwicklung. Es ist unwahrscheinlich, dass es irgendwann eine Zeit in der Person herrscht, wo lernt und weiterentwickelt sich nicht wichtig oder unnötig. Die Grundbildung bietet Studenten die Gelegenheit, zu verantwortlichen und respektvollen globalen Bürgerinnen und Bürger zu werden, die in ihrer wirtschaftlichen Gesundheit und der Familien und Gemeinden und die produktive und sorgfältige Lebensfreude genießen können. Der Ziel der Grundbildung ist, Hürden zu lernen und zu erkennen, was wichtig ist in der Leben und eine Fundamentierung von gleichwertiger Bildung für jeden zu schaffen. Es zielt auch, Studenten humanistische Wachstum zu unterstützen und ihre Wachstum in ethischer Verantwortung, respektvolle Mitglieder der Gesellschaft, um Bildung und gleichwertige Gesellschaft zu fördern. Primärbildung ist eines der Grundbedürfnisse der Menschen. Die Unterschiede, die die Grundbildung machen kann, machen die Menschen einfach zu sehen. Es erlaubt auch den Menschen, verschiedene Kulturen, Religionen und Herde zusammenzukommen während des Schuljahres. Außerdem hilft es ihnen, sich besser zu verstehen und in gegenseitiger Harmonie zu bleiben. Deshalb kann die Bildung eine Verbesserung der sozialen Harmonie bringen. Die Stadt Tswané führt alle Metropole in der Provinz auf Bildungsergebnis. Es hat verschiedene Bildung Indikatoren verbessert, wie z.B. die LITERATE und der Graduationenzahl. Das vorgeschriebene Gesetz für die Änderung sucht, neue Regeln um die Schulen in Südafrika zu introduzieren, besonders in Bezug auf die konservativen Schuljahre von Graden R, Sprachpolitiken und Lehrpläne, Prohibitierung von Kooperations- und Kooperationsverstrafungen und Initiativen. Zu einigen nennen wir einige, all die zielten, die Lebensfreude unserer zukünftigen Leiter zu verbessern, eine feste Fundament, das sie zum Erfolg und zum Vollpotenzial erreichen lässt. In Summe möchte ich den National Assembly Portfolio Committee on Basic Education danken, für die Einladung dieser öffentlichen Ausschuss zu Tswané. Ich begrüße dich alle und hoffe, dass du einen schönen Tag mit uns hast. Ich freue mich persönlich auf eine wissensvollere und robustere Diskussion, die wir heute haben. Vielen Dank.
Sehr wohl, eh, bei uns Tswanana, der Redner von Tswané. Beides ist nicht zu spät, jetzt lasse ich die Mitglieder sichere, starten von meiner rechten Seite.
Danke, Geschäftsführer. Guten Morgen, Menschen von Tswané. Mein Name ist Marina, mein Sowald name ist Van Sale. Ich bin Mitglied des Portfolio Committee on Basic Education im sechsten Parlament, geschickt von der Demokratischen Allianz.
Guten Morgen, everybody. Guten Morgen. Mein Name ist Bakoli Lenot Dada. Ich bin Mitglied des Parlaments in der National Assembly. Ich lehne mich für dieses Portfolio Committee on Basic Education, gewählt von der Demokratischen Allianz, zur Parlament. Danke.
Guten Morgen. Das ist Mari Sukers. Ich bin Mitglied dieses Komitees und ich bin Mitglied der CDIP im Parlament. Danke.
Guten Morgen, guten Nachmittag, everybody. Mein Name ist Roni. Mein Vater heißt Murua Tsetla. Ein Mitglied der National Assembly im sechsten Parlament, ausgestattet vom Afrikanischen Nationalrat. Und im Parlament wurde ich weiter ausgestattet in dieses allwichtiges Portfolio Committee on Basic Education. Und mein Haus ist Limpo Po. Vielen Dank.
Gute Nacht, everyone. Mein Name ist Nomwiselot, meine Damen und Herren. Ich bin ausgestattet in der National Assembly und im Portfolio Committee on Basic Education. Und ich lebe im Nordwesten. Vielen Dank.
Eh, Dumala. Mein Name ist Bafu Zeyabo. Ich bin Mitglied der National Assembly im sechsten Administration. Ich bin ausgestattet zum Parlament vom Afrikanischen Nationalrat und ich bin Mitglied des Portfolio Committee on Basic Education. Dies ist meine eigene Land. Du bist in meinem Backofen. Ja, also du bist willkommen. Willkommen, everyone. Willkommen.
No, vielen Dank, eh, Tswané Menschen, für die uns begrüßt haben. How thank people. Eh, ich möchte nur sagen, dass der Redner sitzt, aber dann wird er uns leave, weil er Gebetverpflichtungen hat. Also wenn du ihn sehen siehst, er ist weg, dann sollte du nicht sagen, dass er nicht respektiert hat. Er hat Gebetverpflichtungen, die er zu erfüllen muss. Mein Name ist Bongi Wem Bingu Kigaba. Ich bin der Geschäftsführer dieses Komitees aus der National Assembly. Ich bin aus dem Nöderen Cape, der sehr sonnige Provinz. Ich bin ausgestattet vom Afrikanischen Nationalrat. Wie du hörst, meine Stimme ist nicht okay, ich bin krank, also werde ich fragen, den Präsidenten neben mir, um die Prozesse zu führen. Aber bevor er das macht, werde ich einen Offizier des Bereichs von Basic Education fragen, um uns durchzuführen. Und ich gebe dir maximal 15 Minuten, Babunlebe, um das zu tun. Und sofort nachdem, wird der Präsident übernehmen. Vielen Dank.
Vielen Dank. Danke, Geschäftsführer, und Honorar Mitglieder des Portfolio Committee, der Redner, und Mitglieder des Mehrheitskomitees in der Stadt Tswané. Und herren und herren, guten Morgen. Guten Morgen. Vielen Dank. Mein Name ist James Nlebe. Ich bin der Direktor des Bereichs von Basic Education, für alle Schulwirtschaftsverhandlungen, für alle Schulwirtschaftsverhandlungen, besondere Präsidenten, sowie Stadtwerke im Land. Wir haben den Bella Bill gemacht, weil wir etwas sahen, was fix war. Und wir haben geschaut, welche Fächer vorhanden waren im Südafrikanischen Schuljahr, was wir glaubten, zu befrüht zu sein. Wir wurden auch von vielen Gerichtsentscheiden beeinträchtigt, die gegen den Bereich gerichtet haben, weil es grüne Bereiche gab, in Bezug auf, wie der Bereich um sie reagieren kann. Wir konzeptualisierten dann den Bella Bill und sendeten ihn zum Parlament, weil die Damen und Herren hinter uns sind, die das einzige können, das eine Gesetz passiert. Wir können nur empfehlen, was das Gesetz sagen muss, aber das letzte sagt es von ihnen. Und wie das funktioniert, ist, dass du auch siehst, was Sie überprüfen müssen und was nicht. Also wenn du den Bella Bill schaust, hat es ungefähr 56 Klasse. Es gibt 56 Dinge, die der Bereich versucht, vor dir zu stellen, damit der Parlament es überprüft. Aber aus den 56 Klasse ist nicht jeder Klasse, die darüber debattiert oder contestiert wird. Also werde ich nur auf die, die ich glaube, viele Herausforderungen oder Interessen von Mitgliedern der Öffentlichkeit haben. Zum Beispiel, aus den Gerichtsentscheiden und den Fächer, die wir haben, haben wir erkannt, dass wir eine Graden R konservativ machen müssen. Und um eine Graden R konservativ zu machen, musst du sie dann im Südafrikanischen Schuljahr hineinsetzen. Weil was jetzt passiert, ist, dass die Schulen, die eine Graden R haben, unerreichbar sind, Finanzierung für eine Graden R zu bekommen. Sie sind unmöglich, Lehrer zu bekommen, die in einer Graden R können, weil sie nicht Teil der Normen und Standards für Finanzierung sind und Teil des Stoffes des Schulen. Also die einzige Möglichkeit, dass wir eine Graden R erkennen können, ist, es in den Akt einzusetzen. Deswegen fordern wir den Parlament, dass eine Graden R ein konservativer Grad wird. Im selben Moment haben wir gesagt, dass es eine konservative Schuljahreszeit gibt. Und diejenigen, die Kinder von der Schule aus verhindern, müssen zu bestimmten Penalties untergebracht werden. Aber diese Dinge wurden nie in der Gesetzgebung beeinflusst, weil die Gesetzgebung nur laut umgeben oder es war ein grünes Feld. Was wir hier überreden, ist, dass jedes Mal, dass es eine Proteste, eine Gemeinschaftssache ist, für irgendeine Gründe, Schulen werden die ersten Ziele, wo die Türen geschlossen sind und Kinder nicht zur Schule gehen lassen werden. Also versuchen wir, es in der Gesetzgebung zu setzen, dass jeder, der Kinder von der Schule aus verhindert, für irgendeine Gründe, bestraft und untergebracht werden muss. Also das ist, was wir in der Gesetzgebung setzen. Diejenigen, die Kinder von der Schule aus verhindern, insbesondere während dieser Proteste. Manchmal sind es selbst die SGB, die die Schlüssel der Schule nehmen, weil sie etwas mit anderen Menschen haben, die in dem Bereich leben. Dann schließt sie die Schule. Dann sagen wir, dass die Gesetzgebung es braucht, wenn es darum geht. Also bringt der Akt einige Penalties umher. Andere Probleme, die wir mitbekommen, sind Probleme, die wir finden, als wir kontrollieren, kontrollieren und versuchen, die Schule zu regieren. Dinge, die es für uns schwierig macht, Bildung zu regieren. Einer davon ist die Sprachpolitik. Die SGB hat das Recht, die Sprachpolitik zu bestimmen. Wir nehmen das Recht nicht weg. Wir sagen immer, SGB, kontinuierlich die Sprachpolitiken deines Schulen, deiner Gemeinschaft zu bestimmen. Aber sollte es Differenzen geben? Sollte es Argumente geben um die Sprachpolitiken? Wir wollen die HODs in den Rahmen bringen, damit die HOD in solchen Situationen intervenieren kann und die HOD dann daraus eine Entscheidung machen kann. Also das ist, was in der Bella Bill steht. Dies ist gemacht, indem wir den HOD die Autorität geben, zu intervenieren, wenn es Probleme gibt. Und wenn die HOD interveniert, haben wir da Schritte gemacht, um zu intervenieren. Und die wichtigsten Schritte sind die der Konsultation. Die HOD kann nicht nur eine Entscheidung machen, sondern er muss mit der SGB arbeiten, mit der Gemeinschaft, in der die Schule gehört, und ein adäquates Entscheidung finden. Das geht auch mit den Abschreibungen. Dass sollte die Abschreibungspolitik die Verantwortung des SGB tragen. Aber sollte es Fälle geben, wo die SGB gesagt hat, dass sie einige Abschreibungsprozesse unfair behandelt hat, dann fordern wir die HOD in diesem Zusammenhang zu intervenieren. Und die Intervention ist in der Bella Bill vorgeschrieben, wie man das tut. Es ist nicht jemand, der einfach kommt und instrukt und gibt Empfehlungen. Sie müssen da sein. Also das sind die Änderungen, die wir in Bezug auf Sprache und all das hineinbringen. Der Bella Bill spricht auch über den Verhalten des Lernens. Was im Verhalten des Akt fehlt, sind tatsächlich Angriffe, die als ernsthaft angesehen werden. Also versucht der Bella Bill, all diese Aktivitäten, die als ernsthaft Misverhalten angesehen werden, zu列 Und gleichzeitig haben wir viele Ausweichen gesehen, die wir glauben, unterschiedlich behandelt hätten, in Ordnung mit der Verfassung und in Ordnung mit der Kultur der Menschen. Dann versucht dieser Bella Bill, zu zeigen und zu stipulieren, was passieren muss, wenn wir mit dem Verhalten des Lernens zu tun haben. Wir wissen, dass in einigen Schulen es gibt, in welchem Weg Schulen finanziell unterstützen werden, durch die Verkauf von Alkohol. Ob es in den Sportsfelden, wenn Rabbis gespielt werden oder Soccer, was auch. Aber dies ist passiert. Jetzt sagen wir in der Bella Bill, können wir etwas putzen, das das Prozess reguliert? Regulieren bedeutet, sollte es eine Aktivität geben, als eine Schule, die Sie fordern, Alkohol zu den Alters, die ein Event teilnehmen, zu verkaufen? Es muss ein Prozess geben, durch den Sie dem Bereich geben, dass Sie das erlauben. Also ist das nicht ein Blatt, das sagt, du öffnest Spaziershoppen, um Alkohol zu verkaufen. Es sagt, sollte es eine Funktion in der Schule geben, wo Sie denken, Sie werden finanziell unterstützen, wenn Sie Alkohol verwenden, für die Alters, die dort sind, muss man applyen. Und der Bereich muss kommen und verifizieren, ob alle Bedingungen und Bedingungen eingesetzt wurden. Und dann können Sie es Ihnen geben, um das zu tun. Einige der Schulhalle werden für Weihnachten verwendet, für alles. Wenn Alkohol in diesem Weihnachtsmann gegeben wird, obwohl es keine Schule ist, muss man applyen, je nachdem, was wir in der Bella Bill gesetzt haben. Der Bella Bill fokussiert auch auf Probleme von Korruption. Und der Bella Bill empfohlen, dass, sollte du Mitglied der SGB sein, du deinen finanziellen Interessen dem Bereich geben solltest, damit wir wissen, dass, wenn wir mit den Prozessen der Schule zu tun haben, mindestens wir wissen, deine finanzielle Interessen und auch die Deklaration, wenn du ein Interesse hast. Und die Deklaration von Interessen geht sogar über die Deklaration von Interessen, auch wenn Positionen gefüllt sind. Das ist, was wir in denen hinzufügen. Wir hinzufügen auch das Faktor, dass der Schulwirtschaftsverband aktuell nur am Ende des Jahres an den Staat richten, insbesondere Juni 30. Das ist, wo du deine finanziellen Statements sendest. Aber wir dachten, als ein Bereich, das ist zu spät für uns, eine Missmanagement von Fonds zu entdecken, bis dahin. Also haben wir in der Bella Bill eine Empfehlung gelegt, die sagt, was wäre, wenn wir finanzielle Statements erhalten, auf eine gewisse Basis. Damit sollte es Probleme geben, wir können sie als möglichst früh herausfinden und damit mit ihm zu tun haben. Es gibt eine Klasse, die zu centralizeder Kaufung spricht. Zentralisierte Kaufung bedeutet, dass ein Gruppe von Schulen zusammenkommen, arbeiten mit dem Bereich, sie dann Sachen in Kalk kaufen, um die Wirtschaftskalorien zu erhöhen, und dann reduzieren sie die Finanzierung. Also die Klasse stellt dar, dass die HOD mit einer Schule kommunizieren kann und stimmen, ob sie Teil der centralizeden Kaufung sind oder nicht. Also das ist die Empfehlung, die wir dem Parlament geben, um mit ihm zu tun. Du wirst wissen, dass Sekundarlehrlinge in der SGB erlaubt sind. Aber der aktuelle SASSA stipuliert nicht exakt. But the current SARS doesn't stipulate exactly what these learners are supposed to do and what not to do. So this bill indicates that learners can participate, but they can't participate in issues of staffing, the interviews and shortlisting. They can't participate when you are signing a contract. So it's the addition that we want to put and ask Parliament to approve it so that we can deal with learners. There has been an issue of rationalization, the merger and closure of small schools. How things is not really affected by this. This was done in the form of guidelines and some policies somewhere, but it was not in the Act. So we're asking Parliament to give us permission to register the steps that needs to be followed before a school can be merged or can be closed. So we're asking you to really comment on that and give Parliament that. The other sticky issue is around home education. The department feels that there are children that are homeschooled, but we don't know about it. Now, the department will never take homeschooling away from parents. It's a constitutional right. The homeschooling will continue. But what we are requesting in the bill is that should you decide to homeschool a child, please let us know. So the bill says, if you want to homeschool your child, inform us in the form of applying that you want to homeschool your child. And whatever syllabus, whatever curriculum you want to follow, it is up to you to follow it. But make sure it's not inferior to what the South African curriculum is. So you can follow whatever curriculum you want. The other addition in terms of homeschooling is that homeschool your child, choose the curriculum that you want. You can see it is in the Bella Bill as it is. Choose the curriculum that you want, but on a regular basis, especially at the end of a phase. Please find somebody who is an assessor, who can confirm that there is education taking place. And it's not the department that is going to do that, but we're saying you parent, it's your responsibility. Find a registered assessor. And a registered assessor is a qualified teacher that can confirm that, yes, there is education taking place in that child. So that's what the Bella Bill is requesting, that give us permission. We don't want to miss children and we don't know where they are. Inform us on where they are. The other thing is that the minister cannot change laws unless the law itself gives it the powers to do that. And some of the powers that we want to give to the minister is the power to allow SGB to apply should they want to change their school and make it a school of focus, encountering the schools of specialization, school of arts, school of music, school of... So we want to give SGB that power to apply, but the minister must determine how the SGB is going to be composed in those schools because it's not going to be an ordinary school. So it will differ from the normal school. So the Bella Bill is requesting for that permission to deal with it. We're also asking the minister to be given powers to determine SGB elections in the country. Because what it is now, she determines the date, but each province will have its own regulations on how elections are conducted. So we're asking that can we give the minister so that there is uniformity in terms of SGB elections as well? We're asking that we have tried to request schools not to expel learners that are pregnant. But it ends up there. There are no steps that teachers need to follow in dealing with pregnant learners. So we're asking that can we give the minister the authority to regulate so that she can give a step-by-step instruction on how schools must deal with learners that come pregnant? Because when they are pregnant, it's basically the responsibility of the Department of Health. But when they are under our care, how do you deal with them? It's a gray area that needs to be closed. And the last one is about corporal punishment. It has been abolished. But we never went down to define what is corporal punishment. We're trying to do this in this bill. And examples of what corporal punishment is are then included in the bill. So Chairperson, those are the most important aspects, which will require the member of public to influence the parliamentary to approve the bill. And should you not like any of the fifty-six clauses, please do indicate specifically which ones you don't like so that maybe it can be rephrased, whether it can be removed so that the process can go on. Thank you very much.
Hello, okay. Congratulations. You are not telling us you're a chief director now. Fella, we are with you all the way. You are umlungu now of some sort. Congratulations, Mr. Nzebe. Um, I'm just rising to want us to get cooperation with one another. My staff is telling me there on the table that there are people who brought envelopes of submissions. That's not how it works. Oral submissions were submitted last year. So we... Yeah, sorry, my apologies. Written submissions. The due date was fifteenth August twenty-twenty-two. So here, what we do, we give you a parliament form as an individual. If you don't want to speak here, we give you a form so that you write what you want to say on that form. And that form must have your name, your ID number, and you bring it back to the table. So the envelopes that you took to the table, I want to clarify it here that they are not counting as part of the process of today. So I wouldn't want letters that would come to my office saying that we submitted forms in an envelope. They are not part of this process. Thank you very much.
Once more, even before we fire on. Good afternoon, once more. Allow me to, I just received a love letter, which indicates that the following cars are blocking the way. When I received the love letter, I asked myself a simple question. The way for who and who's going where? Because we are all here. But nonetheless, because it was an instruction from below, allow me to read FDZ... No, FD two-two WZ. This car is a Mercedes-Benz SUV, silver gray. And in contrast to the Mercedes-Benz JD nine-two WM, it's NP two-hundred. Uh, what kind? It's a bargain, white in color. These two vehicles, direct opposite to each other, are blocking a way for someone. Can we go and shift them, please? The other person, Chairperson, thank you for the opportunity and that I must preside over the proceedings for today. And indeed, mine will be just to marshal the people who will be coming forward and to give their presentations. What is very important, let me indicate from the onset that the Chief Director has outlined what is actually unfolding. This is the first forum after nineteen ninety-six, when the Constitution of the Republic of South Africa was adopted and came into effect at the beginning of nineteen ninety-seven. That we, the Department of Basic Education, seeks to amend the Act that deals with education. It's a very important opportunity, which opportunity may be resurfaced after, say, another ten, twenty, or even another thirty years. You are going to be very free to air your view. And your airing of your views is informed by the Parliament resolution itself. Ours, in as far as it's a constitutional democracy, it is also a participatory democracy. Hence, you see Parliament in your midst. The decorum of Parliament will therefore apply today as we proceed. We are going to call for order. Those who get out of the line, there will also be parliamentary security personnel amongst ourselves who are going to get you out of the house because we are sitting in Parliament as you see us now. I'm not going to say much, much has been said, but just to explain that each person is going to be given a maximum of three minutes, the three minutes on which you must put your position. And when the three minutes lapses, I will be alerted by the timekeeper. We will call you that your time is up. I hope I'm not forgetting any other thing, but we are going to call you from my extreme left. We are going to call, is there anything I'm forgetting, Mama? Not exactly. Thank you. It's okay. Thank you very much. I'm consulting my right hand side. And because especially this one is the leader of the opposite bench. If I continue consulting my left, you might see some discrimination of some kind. We are not there. This is not the platform for fighting. This is one portfolio committee meeting, I mean portfolio committee group. I'm going to start on my left. You raise your hand. We have got parliamentary security services in your midst who will assist in identifying people. When I say one, it means you must take the first chair. I think that ten chairs, I'll take ten hands. Later on, I come this side, I take ten hands until we call it done. But in the meantime, as the chair has explained, those with realizing that they may not be able to talk, you silently creep over there. Can I see the hands of those who are having the what you call the forms? Parliamentary form? There they are, just rise up in the... So that they see you. Come in the front. This lovely old young man is having all the forms needed for those who will, you can't talk, but at the same time complete the form. Once you choose to complete the form, you are not going to be accorded this place to talk. So I think the Chairperson has explained the difference between the submitted envelopes and those who will be coming forward to complete the form. As I believe that is going to be the route to go, but silently move and collect the form without making a noise. I'm starting on my left, right hand side, t- handed. There is a man in front, it's your state. Take the first position. And then I go to the lady with the white blouse. Take your position. I go to the lady up front with the, what is this color, Mama? The color then? Orange, orange color. Take number three. I go to the man with the white cap. Take number four. The lady with the left hand side lifted, yes, yourself. Take number whatever. There is a man, yeah, no, I'm suffering from ageism. And the man in the middle, just stand up yourself, yes. Take whatever number. Uh, I'm going back. Hey, which lady? Because which one? No, no, I want to cover the back and the fourth at the same time. I'm trying to go at the back there, you see? I'm trying to go at the back. There is a lady, you are lifting, you are right hand, yes. Take whatever number. I'm going back, I'm trying to go back and see how best I can balance the equation. There are three hands at the back. Three hands at the back. I wonder if we have not exceeded number ten. Three hands at the back, point at them. Not, yes, that one. Another one, the lady, yeah, follow her. Uh, where is another hand? The guy who's standing? No, no. It's ten. Okay, thank you very much. In that order, maximum of three minutes, you talk, you are understanding and your position, then we will call you. Yeah, shh. What is important, colleagues, is you must be able to tell this house and the world outside there. If you support the bill or you do not support, you may support and have allergy on some and you may not totally support anything. Say so, you are free. This is the freedom of expression as contained in the Bill of Rights. The platform is yours, Wawa.
My name is Kwenamujela from Universal Association of School Governing Bodies, UASGB in short. Uh, I support this bill. Yeah, my momo, she had a declaration. Our member of SGB had declared to HOD. She declared, I don't know, I'm not telling, why should I declare? Uh, and I... She suggested, Hori, the governing bodies, it controls all governor, all embassy, it's like HOD, official administrator, manager. Uh, but what, what teacher? If once, a teacher, always a teacher. Uh, by MLNA, he was... Not all of them are bad, but... Uh, but I'm... Yeah, HOD, I believe, SGB member, more or less, process. Yeah, I'm disciplined. Uh, it's right, it's out of order. I think because I see territory. It's... Uh, who will office, it's like SGB, all embassy, all politician. Because we are governing and we should not be controlled by the manager. The manager should actually see the implementation of the curriculum, not to interfere with the governance. So, you want to... And again, go, and here goes section eighteen A. I'm sorry, number one. But section twenty-seven, able to... I think... So now, yes, poor person, who... He was, he was principal, I guess, I'm... Uh, what... Official, five, five, G. But discipline, but investigation. He was... That recommendation, if HOD power, yeah, I'm going. So something is incorrect there. Please, please look.
Your time is up. Thank you very much. Next.
I mean, English and Sotu, man. And much of his saying was in English. But in any case, if there are people feel they did not benefit, I can call upon the translator, but you must also know his time wasting. You see? Where is the translator?
We are here.
Yeah, you can just summarize where he was speaking in Sotu, but in the main, I heard the English.
Okay, um, my name is Kwenamujela. Well, in the main, I support the bill, but there are parts that I disagree with, especially when it comes to me having to make a declaration to the HOD. Now, I do not see the need to make any declaration whereas you are not paying me. Now, and there's also the part whereby it states that, ah, the... Oh, I'm saying that, ah, the governing body should not be managed by the HOD, because I believe that, ah, there are instances whereby there will be maybe the misuse of powers. And again, I'd not see how the HOD should be given powers to dismiss the SGP, whereas the HOD does not have the powers to can take disciplinary measures against the SGP. And also, the part whereby it talks about remuneration, section twenty seven, I think there should be changes that are made on that. Yeah, I thank you.
Thank you, next.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Honorable Members. I reject the Bella Bill, especially clause thirty seven. Best interest of the learner is mentioned in section fifty one two I, fifty one four and fifty one twelve. The HOD is not in the same position as the parents to determine what is in the best interest of the learner. Parents have a unique understanding of their child's strengths, weaknesses, interests and learning style. Parents are ultimately responsible for their child's education and well-being and therefore are in a better position to choose the education that is in the best interest of the learner. The bill adds the requirements for assessments from a competent assessor. A competent assessor is defined as a qualified educator registered with SAKI. If a child-led approach is in the best interest of the learner, then how would a competent assessor measure learning? The HOD does not know the individual learner, they do not have the same unique knowledge the parent does. How would they determine that a different approach would be in the best interest of the learner? Section fifty one sixteen states, "The minister may make regulations relating to registration for and administration of home education." This further begs the question if it is really in the learner's best interests. The MEC could decide that any online program is unacceptable, as in the case in KZN currently, regardless if it is in the best interest of the learner. The regulations can even include compulsory subjects, resources or programs, regardless of the educational path or requirements that are within the best interest of the learner. My children's best interest are to follow an unconventional vocational path, no set curriculum, grade or content. It was in their best interest to be given the educational freedom to explore and develop their interests very early on. It has proven successful in the case of my son, who is qualified and working in his children's career field at eighteen. It is working for my daughter, who will be qualified with an NQF five equivalent at age seventeen. My son started his career path age sixteen, my daughter aged thirteen. Does clause thirty seven cover their best interests? Would the HOD or MEC have been able to determine the correct educational path for my kids to follow that would be in their best interests? Would a competent assessor have been able to assess their learning in comparison to same-aged peers? The answer is no to all. Clause thirty seven is not in the best interest of the learner. It does not make provision for the parents to implement and determine the educational path that is in the best interest of the learner without the interference of parameters, stipulations and the whims of those who do not know the learner. The learner has a right to have an education that is in their individual best interest and clause thirty seven infringes on those rights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry ma, sorry ma, shh. You forgot something, of course, it is because of me, my sincere apologies. Your name? No, no.
Shomane.
Thank you very much. Next.
Um, Di Melambo, eh, Kenakokezo, ki rejecta clause thirty seven, yeah, the Bella Bill, and Kiona, eh, Kenanlesebo, Fela, Kayona. Hori, ki reject the clause thirty seven, it is because of, ah, like, ah, Guliwa, Goscolong, that it, ki di teacherel, Bana, Babang, go a traditional school, and, eh, Selama, causes ah, depression and anxiety, and then, ah, Thaya, Skolo, and, ah, but, like, drop out. Apart from him, the reality is that, Bana, Babang, Chikodi, Colong, are facing high rates of bullying. Stats SA, ah, wants, ah, or thirty-two million learners pay, um, Bahfisa, Buli, and also drop out rates into, ah, nine point three percent for, Bana, Baling, seven years until fifteen years. And this is due to a lack of interest in the curriculum, which has a negative impact on our social economy and contribute to high rates of unemployment and crime. As a family, we decided, like, for Ronaldo, Dira, homeschooling, um, since, ah, Tomera, homeschooling, Wana, Ahasa, suffer from anxiety and depression, and, Orata, homeschooling. And one of the reasons why Arata homeschooling is just because curriculum, yeah, high, it is personalized according to his interest and according to, di, Loza, Adirata, therefore, ki rejecta clause thirty seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Interpreter.
Good day, my name is, good day, my name is Kokezo, and I reject this bill more so with, in relation to clause number thirty seven. The reason why I'm rejecting it, it is because I have a child who was dismissed in a, in a traditional mainstream school. And this has, um, this has made him to develop depression and to drop out of school. And stats SA mentioned that over thirty-two million of children are being bullied in schools, so there's no functioning i- in that, in that regard. Now, we, as a family, we have decided to homeschool our child, and since then, we have seen that the problems that my child had while, while he was in a traditional school, such as anxiety and depression, have depleted. And my child loves homeschooling. In actual fact, um, he, he, he loves it and it has a great advantage to him. So with that, I, I reject this bill, more so with the clause number thirty seven.
Are you done? Thank you. Okay, are you a new person? Oh, no, I didn't see you. Thank you, you're welcome.
All right. My name is Tumelamatisha. Eh, I'm representing my foundation. I welcome the bill. However, I have number of issues that I need to... One, it is relation to election of SGP members. My, my frustration is that the SGPs do not meet the minimum requirement in terms of contesting the law. So in the circumstance that we find ourselves in, teachers become SGPs and teachers at the same time. And the issue that relates to teachers trying to curb corruption, as long as we do not have SGPs that are capable, that I can read the law, that can interpret the law, that can interpret balance sheet and balance statement, and therefore would not have schools that are functioning. Because the principal would write the report about himself in his office, he will send it to SGP for processing SGP because they do not have capacity, they would claim that they do not have money to source it for legal opinion, they would take it as it is. And whatever we're trying to do will continue to, to continue in schools. So my, my proposal is that while we are increasing, while we are providing the minister with powers, we therefore say it must be, it must be, there must be a clear separation of powers between an SGP and administration. The principal cannot run procurement of anything. What he does, he does things from the, the, the normal administrative process, send them through governance, administration, that would facilitate. The responsibility of teachers must be to teach, the principal, the managers must manage. And those that are charged with responsibilities of administration must run the administration of the school. That, that comes to the election of, of SGPs. And therefore, the minister must be given prerogative to appoint at least five people that he believes that they can curb all the things, because you find a situation whereby I'm the loudest person in the community. I only have standing six, I can't read anything and I become the chairperson of SGP just because I've been voted in. And therefore, principal will always pass procurement, eh, corruption behind me because I do not know anything. Instead of fixing those things, he will actually give me a contract for whatever, transport, give me, so that I must keep quiet. And therefore, corruption will perpetuate. So in terms of election of SGPs, there must be a quota in terms of how the direct election and the others to be, eh, to a minister's appointment, thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you. No interpretation, next.
Greetings to the Honorable Chair and Members. My name is Anemarida Brian. I'm a homeschool mom of three children in Vonarbu in Pretoria. We, as a home educating family, partially reject the bill specifically clause thirty seven.
On what point of order are you rising, Baba? Okay, no, no, while standing, John, wash. Eh, I don't know where is the point of order. There is a difference between a point of order and differing with somebody. Where is your point of order? Eh, I'm advised by the front table that that is not exactly what the previous speakers said. Can I rule that if it was supposed to be a point of order, let it be, what you call, you are suppressed, Baba?
People must be allowed to raise their views. Let, let, we've got many advisors in the, on that table. So let, let us not differ with the person, rather come and say your views, eh, here, because I think we will really be infringing in their rights, but also we are intimidating people now when we would want to be, to be correcting them. Please, if you want to say something, wait for your turn, come and say something, let's proceed with the proceeding, please.
Thank you. The difference between a point of order and differing with somebody, proceed, man.
As I was saying, we partially reject the bill specifically clause thirty seven on the following two points. Point number one, we reject that we need to apply for home education. Since it has been established that we have a constitutional right to home educate, we should not have to apply for home education. Instead, we should notify the Department of Education of our intent to home educate. Further investigations should only follow when just cause is found that children are not being adequately educated at home. Since home education is accessible to people from all races, all socio-economic backgrounds and cultures, my children are getting a real world education integrated into our local multicultural community. If they were denied this privilege, it would be a sad day. We reject being subject to external assessments. An external assessor would need to be knowledgeable about our unique homeschool curriculum. Our eclectic taught children will arrive at the same end point as the CAP students. It's just our route that's different. We are a more concept-oriented route and we have a lot of practice for core concepts. The premise is that each child understands their concept one hundred percent or not at all. Putting a financial and psychological burden on, of external assessments on us and our children is unnecessary and impractical. I, as a home educator, would readily be available to report what my children have mastered in the areas of reading, writing, arithmetic, life skills and other knowledge areas. Whether we choose a South African and international or a vocational curriculum, we teach lifelong learners. Someone would be able to go into the workforce and not be a burden on society. That is what we need more of. Let me end with the next word of a wise man. Everyone can rise above their circumstances and achieve success if they are dedicated to and passionate about what they do. Those were the words of President Nelson Rolichla Mandela. Thank you.
Ria Leboa, next. Next.
Good day, committee members and fellow citizens. I'm Yakovovier and I strongly oppose the Bella Bill entirely. Do you know what is the best education for every child? Their parents or guardians? It has been this way since the beginning of time. Even when I went to public school, we all got the same teachers and educators. The difference between the child that excelled and the ones that struggled could be measured by what they learned from their parents. The child that received good life skills from their parents succeeded. In twenty twenty, all children had to be home educated. Many parents realized the benefits of home education. My children have been home educated the last three years and both, and both have developed a love of learning. We follow a classic educational approach. Classical education is teaching children to think and learn for themselves by implementing to them the tools of learning. These tools are vital to assist the next generation in growing the economy of South Africa. If the Bella Bill clause thirty seven is implemented, the right for parents to educate their own children will be removed and it will now be decided by the Department of Basic Education. The DBE will decide what syllabus every child should be taught and how. I ask that this clause be removed and that new clauses be added that protect the parent's right to choose a curriculum for their choice and to have their children assessed against the curriculum they have chosen and not the CAPS curriculum. The Bella Bill will just negatively, will not just negatively affect homeschoolers, but also public and private schools. The bill undermines parents' rights to teach their children in line with their convictions and beliefs. Clause forty-one gives the Minister of Education broad power to issues, issues, eh, regu- regulations. What these regulations are is not known, but this will give her a blank check to make laws that is enforced by the law. We ask you to rather amend the bill to include freedom of conscience protections from educators and school governing body members. Parents should also have freedom of conscience and be able to protect their children and have the right to opt out from comprehensive sexuality education clauses. CSE cannot be separated from the values and belief systems of parents as this involves close-held beliefs. We cannot allow the further erosion of parental rights. Healthy families are the cornerstones of any society. We pray that the decision-makers will receive wisdom to make the best decisions regarding the, the laws governing the education for every child in South Africa. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Members. My name is Nikki Earl Mallison and I speak on behalf of my family and some members in our community. I oppose the Bella Bill, in particular clause thirty seven related to... in particular clause thirty-seven related to home education. Professionally, as a skills development researcher and policy analyst, I focused on understanding the mismatch between national skills demand and supply. Consistently, beyond qualifications, industry representatives reported a national shortage of intangible skills: teachability and enthusiasm, logic and problem-solving skills, initiative and creativity, the ability to work both independently and part of a team, humbleness and a willingness to learn from the bottom up. When my eldest children, twin boys, reached grade R in the conventional school system, I realized that they were increasingly struggling with behavior, anxiety, that sort of thing. We needed, I quote, "an extremely understanding and patient teacher" to cope with them in grade one, I was told. Then it dawned on me, I needed to be that special teacher. There was no one else in the world who knew them better than I did, who cared more for their long-term education and success than I did as their mother, and I was passionate about education and skills development. Since starting home education in January twenty twenty, I have discovered a wealth of affordable and free, parent and learner-friendly curricula and learning support resources, the ease with which I can accommodate asynchronous learning, the joy of learning alongside my children and the wonderful and talented people who organize sport and other educational events for homeschooling families. And I have seen my children flourish. For us, learning is our lives. In addition to formal lessons, learning is interwoven into all our experiences and discussions every single day. As their teacher, I am always around to connect reality to theory or to answer random questions. I plan holidays to provide additional hands-on learning. Last year, our family visited Mapungubwe and the great Zimbabwe ruins to learn about and celebrate the earliest of Southern African civilizations. Our learning is deep and broad, but cannot be meaningfully measured through standardized age-based quantitative assessments, especially now during their primary school years. As a researcher, I can see that home education represents a challenge for policymakers because it is so diverse and so difficult to measure. However, diversity is at the very heart of democracy and South Africa prides itself on both. Furthermore, democratic policymakers must rest their policies on thorough research. I suggest removing clause thirty-seven from the Bella Bill totally or requesting a minimum notification only by parents. Then undertake solid, including longitudinal outcomes-focused research and those intangible skills will grow.
Your time is up, unfortunately. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Just to clarify also one thing. The bill has got a lot of clauses. So if you've got an issue with thirty-seven, you should be able to say you've got an issue with thirty-seven, but not necessarily reject the entire bill because you've got an issue with thirty-seven in the bill. No, but I'm saying it, it's true, I'm saying it.
Next. My job is to chair here, but if honorable members each has got something to add or to assist, I will always give them, not only the chair, but you must whisper to me first. Thank you, Baba. Fire on.
Ika Malamdu, all the way from Oliverenotbusch, and a member of the SGP. And reject your appeal. God, I don't know, you're a bunch of wankers. The regulation of alcohol is always and cattle no bar, we must sit or want to because about the table cell in this ball corner is puma is back. In terms of people drinking alcohol, whether it's a chat way or can you copy, which you are, must not be allowed at school, in school premises. August being, election of EESGP's. SGP's are not empowered by Ukhulumende. As much as there's no remuneration with SGP's, they are not empowered at all. The three years, he appella umdooko eseka esenyuka is going by a puma, opuma enge nando esandlen, which is why most of the people, other members of SGP, bangayitri bilateral years because they've got other interests. Declaration of finances and on back of ten, if you need a city declare, he interests it because we are not even allowed in Dobasengenza, something, a project or seven within the school project. So he declaration in our finances, prohibition of corporal punishment. The color, this is a solution because a rebellion, abandon a bit by a parallel and you cannot even lift a finger in the name. Empower our teachers, empower parents. My back corner, he workshops, this is a quasi, a good condition. Then there, abandon a bit, abazpetenga, you is going because umdan, we are quasi pendula na, not the shallow, a class in and that leads to that lesson. It is, it has a mistake, you know, because of one child on a phone, a good behavior, a class in. A new regression, Yamagrete R. Senior challenge, Yamagrete One. So and as in the back, Ukhulumende, we together, who's a quasi, now August ninety, since the back, Yamagrete R automatically are registered for a new year because it's go look to him. If you're go cook, so it was, oh, great, I don't know. My baby, formal schooling. What about Yamagrete One, La Angena School? We have Great Eight, Abangikafu, my new school.
Thank you. Interpretor.
Greetings. My name is Nadi. All the way from Oliverenbusch. I'm a member of the SGP. I do not reject the bill in its entirety, but my challenge is alcohol in school. I reject alcohol in school because when alcohol is used at school, there are always unfavorable results. Also, the election of SGP's. The members of the SGP's are not empowered by the government. You find that members spend almost three years, but they are not remunerated and you find that some of the members leave without finishing their term. Also, I have a problem with declaring our financial positions. Because we are not remunerated, I do not see why we need to declare our finances. In, as far as corporal punishment is concerned, the government should come up with solutions to empower teachers. Because you find that the kids challenge the teachers and you find that because of one child, the whole class is being disturbed. We also have a challenge about grade ones. Since the grade Rs have been taken to the schools or the normal schools, we have no place for the children of grade Rs. We have children who are registered for grade one and some of them, or grade eights, have no place at school. But also, I reject that they need to have a place for grade Rs as well. Thank you.
Next.
Honorable Committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Uda DeVet. My family was one of the first families to start home educating after it was legalized in nineteen ninety-six under President Nelson Mandela. I've been intimately involved in the community ever since. I strongly object to section thirty-seven of the Bella Bill. In the Bella Bill's socio-economic impact assessment, it states that clause thirty-seven is necessary to provide clarity on home education. But clause thirty-seven is decidedly not clear. It is a very confusing piece of legislation. For example, subsection eight and nine directly contradict each other. Subsection eight states that you must notify the HOD of your intention to continue with home education after the senior phase, while subsection nine states that no such notification is required. So which one is it? And this is just the tip of the iceberg. The whole clause is rife with confusing phrases and concepts. It is abundantly clear that there was no research and no consultation done to write this clause. A couple of random skill provisions was slapped head-hazardly together with no careful thought and now it is called home education. This is not home education. So firstly, any person who are in favor of any part of this bill should insist that this section be removed as it casts a bad light on everything else. But secondly, if this clause is passed as is, it is going to cause an incredible amount of conflict between officials and parents due to the wide scope of interpretation it allows. I therefore plead with you to rather remove this clause and send it back to the drawing board. Secondly, this clause is highly discriminatory. Home education is an affordable way to receive an excellent education. The annual assessments required in subsection two B three will stick a hefty price tag to home education. And this is not by accident. In a K meeting in twenty seventeen, it was stated that parents should be discouraged from choosing home education by making them pay for the expenses. If you use the price of something to discourage people, it means you are only discouraging poor people. Rich people will continue to make use of this excellent education as before, while poor people will be excluded. This is highly discriminatory and I cannot imagine that this is something that the committee can in good conscience allow. There are solutions. For example, if assessments are taken less frequently, the price tag drops. If only maths and home language are assessed, the price tag drops again. If requirement is rather proof of learning, for example, in portfolio format, the price tag drops to nearly nothing. There truly are solutions which will satisfy both the needs of government and the homeschoolers. But to find it, we need engagement first and we have not been engaged with properly. Please send this clause back to the drawing board. Please, I thank you.
Thank you, madam. Next speaker. Before you talk, one of the front table members asked me a question. Where are the toilets? Is there somebody who's able to assist and bidirect? No, no. How do you get out? Outside. Thank you. Over to you.
Honorable Members of Parliament, I am Friedrich DeVet and I appreciate that you opened with prayer to the one true God. Jesus is King over all the earth and all the nations should come to obey His commandments. I would like to draw our attention to one of His commandments, which is touched upon by the Bella Bill. Ephesians six verse four. Parents, do not exasperate your children. Instead, bring them up in the training and instruction of the Lord. God, excuse me. God gave parents the obligation to rear and teach their children. God did not give the state the obligation to rear and teach children who have parents. The state should not usurp the authority of parents to rear and teach their children. Parents can decide for themselves whether they want someone else to teach their child or whether they will teach them themselves. They, the parents, will ultimately be held responsible before God for their choices in the rearing and teaching of their child and they should be given the freedom to fulfill their obligation towards God. Someone may be thinking that you can make the Bible say anything you want, just like during apartheid. The truth is, you cannot make the Bible say anything you want if you read the whole Bible in its context. The irony is that the apartheid government did not heed Ephesians chapter six verse four. They made it very difficult for people to homeschool their children and in most cases impossible. I plead with the PCBE and the parliament not to make the same mistake as the apartheid government. Don't make it harder to homeschool, but rather easier. Please listen to what the Lord says in Ephesians six verse four and make it part of the law that parents can decide for themselves what is in the best interest of their children regarding teaching as well. The Bella Bill's proposed legislation goes against what the Lord says in Ephesians six verse four. The Bella Bill in clause thirty-seven in subsection one and two proposes that if parents want to homeschool their children, they can apply for registration and the head of department must then approve of this application on the basis of certain prerequisites. This means that parents have to ask permission to homeschool their children from the head of department. In other words, the head of department usurped the God-given prerogative to parents to teach their children. This needs to change in order to be obedient to the Lord. A way to improve the proposed legislation is to implement a system of notification. Parents can notify the head of department that they are going to homeschool their children. Parents then have to ask permission what food they are going to feed their children. Neither the parents need to ask permission to teach their children. This is the word of the Lord. Jesus is King. I reject clause thirty-seven. Please send it back to the drawing board.
Thank you very much. We are done with our round number one. Now, for the sake of fairness, I'm coming to my extreme right. Because there is sometimes confusion. And this time around, I'll start at the back. There is a hand at the most back. Yourself, don't look at the back. Come. No, no, follow him. Follow him, being two. And then there is another hand. Follow. Because you are intimidating me. I am intimidated. Come up front. Yeah. Sometimes intimidation works and it has worked this time around. And the red shirt, come. Yeah, yourself. And there is the spectacles. No, no, she's coming. She's a lady. I want to be sure that you are the right person appointed. Come, Baba. Yeah, yourself. And come, Baba. I know no color. Yeah, it's just, come, Baba. Yourself. How many? Is it ten? Yeah, but this young girl can not, but take her along. She will remain standing. Go there, man. First thing first, number one, come front. Thank you very much.
Honorable Member and team, thank you for the opportunity. For me, as a business owner, I want to also not approve clause thirty-seven because I've found that in business, you need us... Okay, it's Yeben Bakar.
Thank you.
Okay, and in business, there's a different kind of skill set that you sometimes need. And I have found that if I can teach my children that and so also a lot of other parents can teach their children the skill sets that they've learned through experience, experiences that the school teacher would not normally have. You can also improve their chances for success. For me, clause thirty-seven is a clause that gives a lot of power to people that didn't do the research needed. And in terms of that, they will make decisions that's not in the best interest of the kids and not in the best interest of South Africa. At this stage, I would strongly urge the department to do a proper study, a long-term study, to find out what is the actual situation of homeschooling in South Africa. And if something was quite clear during the COVID pandemic was that teachers and parents can work together really, really well and parents can do a proper job to educate their children. And we've seen a dramatic boom in the amount of activities that's available to homeschooling kids nowadays. In Pretoria, we regularly make all stadiums full for sports events and just fun events with all races and kinds of people that you can think of. So to say that we don't have that kind of opportunity is not true. And to say that it costs a lot of money is also not true. You can homeschool and you can use a lot of waste materials and recover those waste materials and do projects that in a normal school environment would not always be feasible. My own kids have got six chickens that they have, that they are raising and that they are selling the eggs off and they learn to take care of those things. And that you can only do in a... And that you can only do in a home environment. You will not be able to have chickens at school. So for me, it's really important that clause thirty-seven must go back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Baba. Next.
As I stand before you, I do not support this particular bill. As to my understanding, most of these clauses, they are actually not promoting quality learning and education. Let I go straight to clause number eighteen and twenty-three. Clause number eighteen has been amended that community members may be co-opted to help the SGB with expertise. Then it comes contrary to clause number twenty-three, which is amending South African Schools Act number twenty-seven, which says no members of the SGB may be remunerated to execute their functions. However, section twenty-three of the same act says we can co-opt members with expertise. How else will I bring expertise to the school without remuneration? Who will come to the school, perform this expertise without any remuneration? We are not asking for remuneration. We are not asking for stipend. We are not asking for salary. We are asking for a fee in honorium in only to say thank you for the services. But then this amendment, they also say as both members of the school, they also say no remuneration for attending meetings, no remuneration for attending school activities, yet subsection one of section twenty-seven says any expenses may be reimbursed. I think skills and expertise are part of expenses, therefore they need to be reimbursed by the school. I think the South African Schools Act need to be looked into. As a matter of fact, all these clauses are not necessary, and all these clauses, we are not supposed to be here and discuss them. I thank you.
Any need for interpretation, but too much was in English. Aye, let's proceed. Next. Sometimes I must apply my authority. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Lincoln Nikhan Komusoto from Region One in Atresville. There are some of the clauses that somehow tend to differ from, but some I support, like on clause two amendment of section three. I think there should be a mechanism in place to monitor the great R at areas like farms, hostels, squatter camps, and also great R of whom their parents maybe they've been separated or divorced, which could not find a quicker location of schools. They sometimes tend to frustrate the children because they don't know where to go. Some other children are going to school, they can't be placed. And then again, on clause eight amendment of section eight point one, the schools will always symbolize the institution of moral value. And alcohol in the same facility will erode the objective of prioritizing education. Age restriction will have to be amended from the current ageiness down to allow access to alcohol, and not only from schools but to liquor outlets. Security measures. There is likely a security risk where alcohol is involved, let alone underage and responsibility of young generation who do not know, who don't have capacity to stand trials because of their age. This could also escalate violence, crime against maybe our young girls during the schools' competitions and events. Drugs will also be concocted into the alcohol since they will also be prohibited. And on clause fourteen amendment of section eighteen point one, the school should not be necessity for the SGB to disclose their family's or partner's financial interest. Note, SGB should remain barred from transacting business at the schools. They are elected to serve. SGB should also always be vetted for any criminal misconduct as well. SGBs cannot tender any services at their elected schools. And on clause eighteen amendment of section twenty-three, there should be programs related to duties assigned to SGBs upon their appointment. Inductions is of essence where SGB will be empowered to execute their tasks. Leadership programs should be established in line with their assigned task, especially financial and accounting subjects. And on clause amendment of section twenty-seven, SGBs should always be entitled for reimbursement of their expenses to and from school activities, meetings, and the assignment, assigned school distance trips. No, this will only be repaying their costs but to encourage their continued involvement in participating at events in schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Baba. Next. Sorry, Baba. Let him come back. My left, I mean my right-hand side are asking a question. You are not clear, supporting or not supporting?
I said I tend to differ on some. There are some that I support on the clause, and then there are clauses that maybe I don't support. There should be one I'll say.
No, no, you have said your mouth.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Partial support, that is what we call in English. Next.
Good morning, MEC and the Entourage, parliamentary officials, guests, as well as everybody who acceded to the invite today. I work in the Department of Education. There are a number of issues that are an impediment to the quality of teaching and learning. There are some challenges that if we don't come together and talk about them, will continue to affect our performance and the future of our own kids. I stand here having gone through a number, if not all, of the provisions that have been proposed by the bill. And I am steadfast and sure that if taken care of and we go by the amendments as proposed, it will take care of quality of teaching and learning in our schools. I thank you.
Say it, do you support or you?
I support the bill.
Thank you, we want those weights. Very important. Next.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Moderator, members. Does he prefer another name? Principal. Thank you, Mr. Principal. Mr. Principal, yeah, I've seen the crowd quite enthusiastic about section thirty-seven. I'm disappointed that we're not taking issue with that because we're going to be missing the cheers of the crowd. We don't have an issue with section thirty-seven. My name is Jacques De Beir. I am representing the Afrikaans Word School, Boys' School, Sjensword. I'm a member of the SGB. I'm also an admitted attorney of the High Court of South Africa. And I'm not saying that to promote myself, ipso facto, at this comity. It's just to qualify what I will conclude later in my speech. So we've submitted during June, the SGB has submitted comprehensive comprehensive commentary on the act and everything we have a problem with. We do not support the act. If the choice is between supporting the act and not supporting, and there's no middle way, then I choose then to declare we do not support the act. Yeah, so we have submitted comprehensive comments on the Bella Act during June before it closed in August. I think August was the extended date. So already in June, it was submitted. I do have a copy here of it. I don't know if we can submit our submissions today, the summary. I think the notice did say something about that, or is there no provision for that? Thank you, member. So I just want to relate, and this is more, it's not really the SGB and it's not really the school. I just want to relate my personal take on the Bella Act and the provisions thereof and where I think it's going. During the COVID epidemic, we, after the state of disaster was declared, my family and I, we watched all these, my fellow South African announcements on TV, which was broadcast of the Honorable President Cyril Ramaphosa. And we were waiting in anticipation to see how our president will lead us through this crisis. We started to realize that our president is not really gonna lead us in this crisis. He's gonna look out for his constituents. And that's why certain policies were announced that was only for certain divisions or groups in the, in the community of the citizens. So we realized that, and we said, okay, now let's walk away from that. And that feeling that I got there, that disappointment, that there is only gonna be maybe certain provisions for certain groups, that's exactly the same feeling I got when I first read the Bella amendments, that we are creating a division here and that this piece of legislation is aimed at a certain group. And not only is it aimed at a certain group, the reason, in my opinion, for it is that we need to alleviate or mitigate certain shortcomings in our Department of Education. And now we are looking to offload those circumstances, those challenges on certain groups. And that certainly can't be a motivation for bringing out a piece of legislation. It must be to ensure quality education.
Advocate, unfortunately, your time is up.
Can I conclude, Mr. Principal?
Go what?
Can I conclude?
No, your time is up. And what do you conclude when the time is up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Principal. In closing, I think the legislation should go back. We should not consider legislation as a means to alleviate or sort out our challenges.
Is this a strike? Thank you. Okay, Advocate, thank you very much for explaining yourself. Maybe just to clarify, the concept principal. In the sixth parliament, no one from there to there and even outside has ever served as a principal like this animal. Thirty years, five months, and three weeks. Hence the title, principal. Thank you, over to you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairperson and honorable members of parliament. My name is Henk Bratenbach, and I am from the Teachers Network, which represents approximately five thousand members in the public education sector. It is our view that the emphasis should be on the building of more schools, the development of mother tongue education, and the implementation thereof, as well as on working towards a more decentralized system. We believe that the current focus, namely interference from the state, will not produce higher pass rates, nor will it result in lower dropout rates. Furthermore, we also believe that the Amendment Bill will not address any other challenges the education system currently faces. It is the Teachers Network's opinion that the Bella Bill in its current form or format is not in the best interest of learners, educators, and certainly not serving the interest of the broader South African community. Thus, we oppose this entire bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, can you hear me? Honorable Chair, honorable members, and esteemed fellow citizens. Good afternoon. Sanbonani, Dumelang, Gwiamadach. My name is Retief Kutsar, and the comment was made a few moments earlier. You do not have to reject an entire bill because of one clause. If you put one drop of poison in my glass of water, I will refuse the water. I am rejecting the bill. I want to talk about the importance of protecting the right to homeschooling for all parents and children, and why we need to oppose specifically clause thirty-seven. Homeschooling provides parents with the flexibility to tailor their children's education to their specific needs and interests. It allows children to learn at their own pace and in their own environment, which can lead to a better learning experience and improved outcomes. However, clause thirty-seven poses a threat to this right. This clause gives the state the power to determine the standards and qualifications for homeschooling, which could result in unnecessary and unburdenous regulations that impede parents' ability to homeschool their children. We must oppose clause thirty-seven and work to ensure that parents have the freedom to choose the education that is best for their children without unnecessary government interference. We must also work to ensure that children can receive an education that is tailored to their individual needs. But we also need to provide solutions and not only criticize. One alternative that could be suited for my family is to form or join a homeschooling cooperative with other families, which could provide resources, support, and guidance for homeschooling. The Portfolio Committee on Basic Education needs answers to these three questions. How does the state fulfill its constitutional obligation to ensure that the right to education for learners in home education is fulfilled? The state can fulfill its obligation by recognizing and protecting the right to homeschooling and by providing resources and support for parents who choose to homeschool their children. How do we stop children from falling through the cracks in home education? We can stop that by ensuring that homeschooling parents have access to resources, support, and guidance. What uses freedom in homeschooling to the rest of society? It benefits society by promoting diversity in education, empowering parents to choose the education that is best for their children. It also helps to reduce the burden of the public education system by allowing parents to take responsibility for their children's education. In conclusion, homeschooling is an important human right that must be protected for all parents and children. Let us work together to oppose this clause. In the Bible, in Ephesians six verse one to four, God tells us clearly that raising and educating children are the parent's responsibility. The parents should have the final say in how they choose to raise up their children. This is another way how we honor the only living God, Jesus Christ. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Honorable Chairperson and honorable members of the Parliamentary Committee, we appreciate the opportunity to have our voice heard. Let me introduce myself. My name is Albert Lamy. I am a member of the governing body of the Afrikaans Word School in Pretoria. We have made written submissions to the Parliamentary Portfolio Committee. It's only eleven pages, but we have endeavored to summarize the critical issues that we have a problem with. And when I'm saying that, there are certain provisions in the Amendment Bill that we focus on in the submissions and which I cannot unfortunately repeat within the timeframe allowed. I'm going to encapsulate three aspects, and the one actually coincides with the other. The one is giving the power to the head of the provincial department to The one is giving the power to the head of the provincial department to approve an admission policy and to approve a language policy. Now let me tell you what the fundamental problem with that is. In terms of the present scheme of the South African Schools Act, which was enacted in 1996, it coincided with the constitution. In other words, it already musted constitutional approval. Now, the Schools Act very wisely devised a partnership model between governing bodies, the provincial departments and the national department. All three of them are organs of state that have to comply with the principles of cooperative governance in the constitution. Our Constitutional Court has said in Armalur that the governing body is a beacon of grassroots democracy in the community. Now that is important. When you have democracy in action on a community level, it means you enclose them with the powers of policymaking. Policymaking is an integral part of a democratic elected body, such as the National Assembly, such as a provincial assembly, such as cabinet. The moment that you take away, and I've heard what the representative of the department says, it's unfortunately incorrect and legally incorrect. He says they just want to intervene. The scope is already there to intervene. I'm going to tell you why. The policy is subject to the constitution. It is subject to the provincial law. It is subject to the national legislation. Section 58c of the Act says, the MSC must ensure that the policy determined by the governing body in terms of section 5.5 and 6.2 complies with norms and standards. There is national norms and standards in, which have been promulgated. And therefore, there's no reason to introduce this amendment. The checks and balances are there.
Unfortunately, your time is up, my lord. Wait one second or two seconds. The other guy talked about a drop of poison in the glass. It will be poisonous, wow. Your time is up. No ways, your time is up. Thank you very much. Next.
Mr. Chairperson, Mrs. Chairperson and the members of the Portfolio Committee, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the Bala Bill. My name is Clarinda Sishi. I am a homeschooling parent of three children. I've been homeschooling, this is my 11th year of homeschooling. Prior to that, I worked as a social worker. I say this because I am passionate about my children and education and I'm also, I have an understanding of what it means to have the best interests of children at the forefront of every decision. Our family chose to homeschool because we wanted to be personally involved in the education of our children in a manner that builds their character, trains their intellect and equips them for life. Every child deserves the integrity and dignity of an education that brings out the best and not stifle them into a predetermined box. Choosing homeschooling in a different approach to the one used in public schools has immensely benefited our family. It has given our family flexibility of time, focus, pacing and the resources we needed to meet the unique needs of our children, including one of our children who had special learning needs. I am therefore dismayed at governments' attempts to control this freedom and I disagree with the administering of the choices that we should make as parents. In particular, I oppose section 37 of the proposed bill. Firstly, it is not in line with my right as a parent under the constitution to choose how I educate my children, specifically because of the requirement to apply, application. This means officially requesting permission and that encroaches on my parental rights. Secondly, the section 37 will increase the administrative burden on government and the bureaucratic delays will frustrate efforts of homeschoolers to do their job. I believe that just a simple notification to government will be a sufficient way of keeping a record of all the families who are choosing to homeschool their children. Thirdly, the Department of Education is not in the position to adequately evaluate and assess all the varied homeschooling approaches and programs that there are. So many families choose the best researched learning approaches to match the growth and development of their own children. And the various types of support and resources that we all tap into to create real life learning is something that an assessor will find it very difficult to evaluate. So I oppose the Bala Bill and I ask that more research goes into understanding homeschooling and the nature of it.
Unfortunately, your time is up. Thank you. Next.
Honorable Chair, Committee Members, I'm part of SGB of the Wurschwiverfall. And with me together today, I've got SGB members here with me. We represent two primary schools, one high school. I strongly oppose the proposed bill and especially the following sections. The governing body's power concerning the admission policy, language policy, code of conduct, disclosure of financial interests by members of the governing body. The SGB's powers concerning procurement, the HOD powers to remove the function from the SGB, administrative burden on the SGB. And what we mean there is always, every term, putting forward a financial statement. I would like to see more focus on training of SGBs. What is a SGB? A SGB is the mouthpiece voted by the parents to be their voice in a school. That's a SGB. And if SGB is not trained in that function, it won't function. Then we have the problems like some of the previous speakers said, that people leave early in their terms. We've got very good organizations in South Africa, namely like Fetsas. And I would see a proposed amendment to this bill when it comes back to us where it is mandatory for SGB members to be trained, sufficiently trained, to be a SGB member. It's not a position of power that you are in. It's a position of, like you guys sitting there, serving our community. The other part of the bill that we do not agree of with is the part where you, the HOD will have the power to appoint principals to the school. I feel that the community, the schooling community knows best who to appoint to the school. And that power must lie within the community. They know the children, the parents know who will fit with the children. And today, we are missing one big point. And that point is, we are here for children. We must set aside all our feelings. If we want to unite South Africa, it will start at the bottom with our children, not by us sitting here. We will always have a difference. But like I greeted you in Isizulu today, my Suzulu is not that great. We must respect each other and we must teach that down from the children going up. Then we will unite South Africa. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairperson and members of Parliament. Thank you for the opportunity. We've already handed in a submission earlier, so I'm gonna say a few things just to add it. I think we are all well-known to this saying, it takes a community to ra-
Name and surname?
Sorry, my name is Hugo Vermeelen. I'm head of training of the Solidarity School Support Centre, Schooler Understanding Centre. I think you're all well-known to the saying, it takes a community to raise a child. It does not take a central government to raise a child. The parents, the grandparents and the persons in the community, the support base of a child, knows the child and knows what is best for the child. The current S.H. Schools Act of 1996 allows for public schools and places it in the governance of the school governing body that decides on submissions as well as language policy. This ensures involvement, buy-in and support for the school. The new proposal of Bala will give too much power to the head of department and we are backward step. I know you said, somebody said the head of department may intervene, but that bill will probably cause them, they will intervene. That will be a backward step towards state schools. We are against the centralization of power, rather give power to the people. So we are definitely against the new Bala proposal. Secondly, we believe that the Bala Bill will have a huge negative effect on Afrikaans schools. We of the School Support Centre are involved in more than 1,000 Afrikaans dual medium and single medium schools. We believe in mother tongue education. Although there's a 3% increase in Afrikaans language speakers as well as Afrikaans mother tongue learners, there's a 16% decrease in Afrikaans schools. Studies have shown that Afrikaans schools changed to dual medium schools and then they involve, evolve into English schools. This is against the dream of a multicultural culture of South Africa where all cultures and languages have equal rights and equal opportunities. We believe that mother tongue education is the best form of education. Currently, 71% of all children are taught in English, although only 10% children in schools are English mother tongue. Therefore, the Bala Bill will, will not be good for Afrikaans schools and will place too much power in the head of the department to change or enforce a language policy. We propose to withdraw the current version, strengthen the role of the community representative and the SGB to determine the school policies and make decisions which is in the best interest of the learners and the community they serve, provide protection and support for all languages and cultural communities and delegate power to schools with proven manageable ability. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
My name is Krishna Brandt. I reject Clause 37 and start my comments with my poem, "The Spring, From This Child To The State." I am like a little spring that softly sings a little song. You are like the mighty river roaring, storming, threatening, strong. My bubbling voice is drowning in your crashing, foaming, flooding waves. Your teacher's dream will float me, but it sinks me like a nameless slave. The war for me is silent, it's the secret deep inside your throat. I think you want to own me, so you wash away my voice, my vote. You handcuff my whole family. We may not choose the way I grow and learn to be uniquely me. We are not free, your laws say so. You spread the word, all parents who will not subject their kids to school are bad and guilty of neglect. It may just be the opposite. My parents care like no one else. My home is safe and free from fear and I'm not just another kid, I'm valued treasure, loved and dear. Please, recede, stay back a bit. My crucial childhood needs to breathe. Your school is not the only route, come study the alternative. As a mom, qualified teacher and advocate for home education, I oppose the Bala Bill. It undermines parents' rights to properly provide and care for their developing children as it gives too much power to the state. Home education is an interest-led approach to education that regards each child's learning style and needs and happens at each child's own pace in the safety of home. It is a designer education made possible by caring and self-sacrificing parents. I ask government to really study and acknowledge home education in all its fullness and create a space for it. It's not new, all of us learned a whole language at home. Leonardo da Vinci and Mozart were home educated. As a totally different approach, home education has nothing to do with school whatsoever. Therefore, home education should not be regulated by the School Act but by the Children's Act. Please remove the whole Clause 37 from the Bala Bill. I close, consider the following questions. Could the state's good intentions be harmful? Is it in the child's best interest to be forced to learn in a certain way? Is school really the only approach to a good education? Are parents and children still not free 29 years after becoming a democracy? Who owns our children?
Thank you. My daughter, come forward, dear. Thank you.
My name is Ilani Kisweder. I am 12 years old and I am a homeschooler from Pretoria. I oppose the Bala Bill specifically Clause 37. I have never been to school, yet I have learned to read and write and give speeches like other grade sevens. I like homeschooling because it allows children to spend more time in their passions and interests. Instead, they can, and they can excel at subjects that they enjoy and are good at. The Bala Bill states that a official from the Department of Education can come to my house and decide if homeschooling is in my best interests? I don't feel this is fair because how can a stranger know what's in my best interests better than my own parents? For example, I love working in the garden and learning about plants and their healing properties. So I am currently studying herbalism through an online platform. My mom could facilitate this very specific learning. The Bala Bill is an amendment of the Schools Act of 1996, but I don't go to school. So I ask to split the bill so that the complex subject of home education is allocated more than the current two pages. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start at the back, in the name of democracy. Any hand? Nothing. Hey, I said this side. I'm still gonna come back there. I think you came late. I started this and came this side, now it's that side. Equilibrium. Democratic centralism, that lady there, Rosa. Why should I leave you? Cause, Rosa. Rosa. The naira in blood, the most bloody, Rosa. Rosa. How many seats? Let me see.
Let me see. How many seats? One. Wait a bit, wait, wait a bit. Any child this side? Okay, taengwanaka. No, taengwanaka, hosa. No, you are too old. Hosa. Why did you leave your kids at home? At the back, taengwanaka. Number one, take over. Over to you.
Chair and honorable members of this committee, in South Africa, the youth unemployment rate is 61%. Bearing that in mind, this government who has brought us this unemployment rate, lack of basic service delivery, and an all-around lackluster approach to problems in South Africa, wants us to believe that they are capable of taking complete control of our schools. Because let's be real, that is what the Bala Bill is. It's taking control of public education, turning public education into state education. Not only does the Bala Bill fail to address any real issues, it serves to further the influence of a government who consistently forgets that the best way for a child to learn, or anyone for that matter, is in their mother tongue. The Bala Bill strikes at the heart of mother tongue education, and as with most other things, government attempts fails to ensure any semblance of quality. Parents have a vested interest in the welfare of their children, that is why they form governing bodies, that is why they participate, and that is what the Bala Bill tries to undermine. The changes that are being advocated for in this bill allows power to go up, back towards government and away from communities who truly know what their children need. These changes are contrary to the South African Schools Act, which contains that parents and governing bodies are the most qualified to be involved in their children's futures. This bill tries to replace parents with politicians. Solidarity Youth represents children and students across the country, and the resounding no that they give for the Bala Bill signals that we should not only protect mother tongue education, but we should further it. There can exist an education system in South Africa that works for the people it serves and not against them, but the Bala Bill will not produce that. As was mentioned during the opening statements, students and young people have a right to a good quality education. The fact of the matter is that the Bala Bill will move South Africans further away from this right. We reject the Bala Bill in its entirety. Our comments as seen today here reflect that, and our written comments earlier last year also that. Thank you.
Colleagues, what is very important is, especially when the speaker is rounding up, it's important that the recording must record exactly what the speaker or the presenter is making. So in our cheering, can we suppress a bit, because the cheering will not count at the end of the day. Dangibaba.
Thank you, program director, all relevant structures.
Oh, sorry, I'm being advised. The name of the previous speaker. No, no, you need to come forward, the name of the previous speaker for recording purposes. The name of the previous speaker. For recording purposes.
My mistake, Chair. My name is Frankui Vanaberg and I represent Solidarity Youth.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, once more again. Thank you, program director, all relevant structures that are here, this team which guest, let all the people who love the people and the country now says, as we says, here is the freedom, we'll fight side for side through our lives until we win our liberation. Without wasting any time with nothing but nothing. My name is Filimon Masha. Why I'm here today, my concern is that South African school infrastructure guidelines, best vision 2015, I mean 25 March 2017. Safety and security of our learners and education in our school remain one of the biggest concern. That problem, it is not started today, since it's been started in 1943. The theologist Abram Maswell also indicated. Ladies and gentlemen, without security at our school, without infrastructure, we can talk about all these bills, but without the infrastructure of the schools, we don't have the school. First thing first, in this amendment that you can say, is the infrastructure. We still have lack of infrastructure in South Africa as large. As you see here, this municipality hall, there's a thing that is hanging there, there's a rope. This is what is happening. In the infrastructures of our school, which is wrong, and where is the safety of our children? Well, what's so-called, the infrastructure is not complying according to the law that today we want to amend here. Yes, indeed, South African people, we can say this bill is not okay, but on the other side is okay. How could we say we want to sell the alcohol in the school while we have the challenges of drugs at the school, and marijuana, and weapons, and other things that are illegal in the school? I'm here to talk about the safety, nothing more else. This is my concern. My concern is the safety of the teachers and the learners in our school. We need security guard 24 hours in the school. Armed. Thank you very much.
Wait a bit, colleagues, oh comrades, Kips. We want to know, do you support the bill or not?
Which bill actually?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, commander. Thank you, thank you. Of course, colleagues, it must be recorded, the colleagues cannot support or not, cannot support or reject because he's asking, where is the bill? Next.
Afternoon, everyone. I would like to thank Parliament for its presence here and the honorable officials also from the Department of Education. What I would like to know or ask, let me say, I would like to ask Parliament to please look at the, whether, what the word necessary means when it comes to the work that is being performed or been done by the SGBs at the schools. Let the Parliament please look at the importance, consider the importance of the work, the legal implications thereof. Because to me, the work seems to be of such importance that it has legal implications. For instance, the work of the treasurer, the work of the chairperson of the SGP and other members here as well. An SGP also bearing that legal status as a juristic person. So please, let our Parliament be reasonable enough or also consider reasonable, reasonableness as it is defined in the law. We are parents and I would like to appreciate the opportunity that the law gives us as parents to partake in the education of, or the management of educational provision thereof at schools. So thank you very much for this opportunity again to our Department of Education and our Parliament. So I would like to say, in conclusion, that we support education because it's a key. Professionalism is being considered, that in the exercise of the principal's work or his official duties, professionalism is being required. Therefore, parents have to be capacitated, let Parliament also look at that, in support of capacity building of the SGP members. And please, let us also consider the right of the parent component to dignity. They have dignity as well and it's an inherent right in our constitution. So please, please, let our Parliament and the officials of the department look into that or zoom into that, look into that very closely, because the parents have a right to dignity.
Wait a bit, do you support this bill?
Yes, sir, I was about to get there, thank you. I am good man, Masago, from an SGP chairperson from Morula View Primary School, right here at home. I am in full support of the work of Parliament, the bill, considering what the gentleman has just said, that let us not reject the whole bill because of one, two, three clauses only. Thank you very much.
Dangibaba, next.
Good afternoon, honorable committee. My name is Megan Woolley and I reject some of the Bala Bill, particularly clause 37. I'm here to make two pleas. The first is a plea for individuality in curriculum choice and assessment. One of the greatest privileges of my life is that I have seven people who call me mom. Had my oldest intelligent son been restricted to mainstream schooling in a standardized curriculum like KIPS, he would have been denied subjects that greatly stimulated his gifted mind, subjects like Latin and rhetoric and logic. He would not be the actuarial scientist he is today, earning a lot of money but also paying a lot of tax and dreaming of being part of the tutoring of the next generation in maths. Had my oldest daughter been forced to a very specific grade level, she would not have been employed as a full-time teacher, equipping the next generation of preschoolers in vital foundations by the time she was 19. Had my middle girl not been pushed to study subjects she did not like and thought she could not do, she would not be enrolled in and loving her BSc Computer Science Studies. Had my autistic, previously abused, adopted son been forced to learn English before he could be allowed to progress in maths and science, he would have been so frustrated and left behind. He would not be finishing his first year of BSc Computer Science at 18. Had my son diagnosed with severe learning difficulties been restrained by a system that required him to progress at a certain pace in all subjects, he would be the oldest in his class, struggling under that stigma. He would also not have had the flexibility to develop his phenomenal skills outside of the classroom, strengths like entrepreneurship, social abilities, and extreme sports. Should my younger daughter, broken by reactive attachment disorder, be put in an environment that removes her from those who know her and love her, it will be nothing less than dangerous for her. It seems too obvious to mention that my cerebral palsy son could never function in mainstream educational systems. While home education is allowed under the new bill, certain requirements that will be imposed on homeschoolers threaten to make it practically impossible. A standardized curriculum and a one-size-fits-all assessment procedure would not be effective nor even helpful. Not one of my seven children, from every range of intelligence, emotional IQ and personality type, would have benefited from such a system. In fact, they would have been prejudiced by it. In the words of our own Nelson Mandela, "There can never be a keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats its children." And just one quick final, last plea, a plea for my people. I love, I love, love, love my Rainbow Nation, but my father, my grandparents, most of my aunts and uncles went to their grave, never being able to enjoy our multicultural richness. They were never encouraged, equipped, nor even allowed to experience or appreciate it. This was partly due to them being raised in an ideology where schools were used for propaganda, a standard cookie cutter controlled system used to enforce the values of those in power. We have made such great progress as a nation. Let us keep leaping forward, correcting our steps as we go, but never turning back. So I stand here not only to plead for my own inner little circle of children, but for my country and the people in it that I love dearly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, mama. Next.
Niabongalaloo, Andrew Malaam. I almost said a man, but I'm in Parliament. I've got few reservations in respect of the bill. See to UH, HOD, Maga Yegitros 16, because he has a lot in his hand. When you speak about centralizing, you take...